The cloud go.
There we go.
Here.
Got it.
Got it.
All right, call this meeting to order April 7th at 6:31 PM. And first thing, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Colleen, are you able to lead that?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag.
of the United States.
To the republic from which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then if we could do roll call, is Colleen doing that or is Jackie on?
I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I've got Counselor Coker.
Here.
Your name?
Here, if that was me.
Beerson. Counselor Whitney.
Counselor Whitney might be a little late. She said she was traveling to a ballgame, so she's going to log on as soon as she can.
Okay, Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Hollitt.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
And Counselor Spleeloff.
Here.
All right, so just so the public knows, we have a little bit different order tonight. We're doing a work session along with our regular council meeting. So the first thing we're going to do tonight is go straight into our work session, and that is going to be a presentation from Pro Tem Kevin Cronin, and I assume Colleen Shirley is also going to be leading that with him. So during this time, during work sessions, there is no public comment. However, when we come out of the work session, we will have the regular standard public comment time. So go ahead, Colleen and Kevin.
Thank you so much, Mayor and members of council. It's great to be with you this evening. It is absolutely gorgeous in the state of Oregon tonight. It feels criminal to hold a city council meeting tonight. But here we are. It is a regular council meeting, and I'm glad we have an opportunity to have a work session on a topic that is extremely important to the community. This is the hottest topic that I've dealt with since I've been your Pro Tem for this last month. So the purpose of the work session, and really the purpose of any city manager is to provide the facts. So what Colleen and I have done is put together just a couple of facts. We have just a real short presentation, four slides to go over what we know today, which will provide some good information for council to make informed decisions, especially as we head into the budget season. So Colleen, if you could advance the slide, that would be great.
I can't because it's.
You see this slide? I would just use the slide over to the right.
Oh, I got stuff over there. Okay.
Or you can click on the slide a second ago. Great. So this is just kind of a background slide on what the public safety fee is. And this may not be new to the council, but again, this presentation is really hopefully educational for the community who may not be aware of all the aspects of the public safety fee. So obviously, we had an ordinance that established the fee, ordinance 937. The resolution actually sets the fees, and so council landed on $22 a month. It is actually not part of the utility bill. It's, we do have to do a mailer like the utility bill, but right now it is separated from the utility bill. It's 22 a month or 264 annual. So the funds generated are what we call general fund. It all goes into a general fund category, just like business licenses, just like plan. Okay. So we have these general funds, and then as Colleen and I are developing budget for next year, we have to obviously project what the general fund is going to be starting July 1st. And with our quarterly reports, we have to determine whether our projected fund is meeting what we've actually collected, and we're going to talk about that here a little bit. So most of the funds have been allocated to the emergency services fund to fund the increasing cost of our ambulance services. We started collecting the fee back in December, and our enforcement tools are limited to just a lien. We have not issued any liens on any properties to date. Go ahead, and this is the slide I think most folks really want to look at, the numbers. So March 31st was the end of quarter three, and we, in our adopted budget, we had projected 475. We've only collected 78, and if you do a basic trend analysis, we're looking at about 157, or just shy of 160 by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, for a projected deficit of 240. We've already issued 273 exemptions. That obviously changes daily as Leah is able to process those and get them in front of me. We still have quite a few that have not met the standard for the review in terms of the information that we need to do it. And just so you know, the cost per trip for transport is about $2,200. At least that's what I've been told. Let's go to the last slide for some next steps, and then I'll open it up for questions. So for me, in my view, the next steps are the budget, right? No brainer. I've got to get a proposed budget to the budget committee on April 25th. It'll be released on the 18th, which gives us a week to do our homework and sharpen our pencils. I want to be able to review the current ordinance, and I want to be able to recommend changes to council as part of the the budget review process. And in the short term, we really need to be looking at other revenue sources, reductions in funds, schedule changes, part-time staff. The fire department's already looking at hiring part-time staff. We have an announcement on the website around that. And if that doesn't work, we need to look at schedule changes. I already mentioned the budget committee is expected to meet on April 25th. The notice has been sent to the Herald for that, as well as on the website. Moving forward, all options need to be on the table in order to figure out the budget. And then long term, it's about creating a funding strategy for sustained operations. The mayor is expected to report out on her special district committee later in the meeting during the regular meeting. With that, I think Colleen and I would love to take your questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing that pops into my mind is I haven't reviewed the financial report that we were emailed today. I did review the last one we got, probably the second meeting in March. And it showed that we had not yet transferred any general fund dollars to the emergency services fund, which we are budgeted, I think, $565,000 if I remember correctly. So my concern is, why do these slides that you just showed us state that that we've been transferring all the safety fee into emergency services because emergency is short in actual quality? We haven't even transferred that money yet.
Yeah, no, we haven't done any official transfer. That was just a general statement in terms of what the original purpose of the safety fee was for. So there's the budget, and then there was the purpose of the fee, and I was really referring to the purpose of the fee.
Oh, so I'd actually kind of like to know where we actually stand. Obviously, that's not going to happen tonight, but
No, it's not.
it is something that you know, is really something I want to look at for our community is where we actually stand financially with the fire department. Maybe we can move away from the insinuation that the that the shortage is in the fire department when we actually look at it. That's all I have.
Counselors? Audie, did you have anything?
Yes, that was one of the biggest questions that Don asked. We don't have anything transferred over to the general fund to the emergency services. I think it's kind of misleading to the citizens of Oak Ridge to say that the ambulance service, the fire department at the moment is the city so much more that they're in a deficit when we really don't know that. So we shouldn't be, until it's out on record to show where the we should be projecting.
Yeah, let me, let me speak to that. So the deficit is specific to the expected revenues for that lineup. That's all. It doesn't reflect the emergency services fund. That is a much larger picture when you've got personnel services, materials and services, and any potential capital funds. I don't think there's any capital funds for the fire station, but those are the two biggies, right, which we're going to talk about as a budget committee here soon. So I want to be very clear, what we're showing is just the public safety fee. That's the purpose of the work session.
So I have a question. So my understanding, the public safety fee, and I know this all happened before your time, Kevin, but the public safety fee was really to cover essentially all of the city's operating expenses, not just emergency services. So I guess really what you've answered for us is that we've only collected $78,000 when we should have collected 157. Is that what that slide said?
Yeah, the 157 is what we think we're going to have at the end of the fiscal year. So it's our best guess at this point, based on the amount of that we've collected per month since December. And it's largely gone down over time. So Colleen and I want to be fairly conservative in terms of what we think we're going to collect at the end of the year. But if you compare what we think we're going to get versus you know, versus what was in the budget, it's pretty significant. And so that's where we've got to really figure out how to fund all of our general as you're referring to.
So my question overall is, you know, we have a petition on the record from citizens asking us to remove the public safety fee. So I guess my biggest question is, what does that look like if we were to repeal that public safety fee? How does that affect the big picture? You know, where, where are we going to have to take money from our funds from? Or I guess, I guess that's my big question, the most.
Yeah, so right now, we've already made some, some cuts to this current fiscal year in order to hedge against the, the lack of collections on the safety fee. And so that was done by my predecessor. So we had to reduce some some staff hours in the front office, and we've essentially put a cabotion on all general fund spending that is not absolutely necessary. So we're trying our best to kind of get our arms around the issues so that we can not end up in the red on, on our revenues and expenditures. That's obviously not a good place to start when we're trying to start fresh July 1st. So yeah, that's as much as I know in terms of like the bigger picture.
You're muted, Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I wanted to ask, Colleen, is the issue resolved where the software you were using wasn't recording the safety fee properly?
Yeah, that's all taken care of. So it's, it's all in there. We checked all the numbers and all that. So really, when I send my stuff out to you guys, it's what you're seeing is the revenue side. So you're seeing what we're expecting to bring in because we've already billed this for the safety fee, right? So it's showing this is what we should have, but we're not because we're not taking it in.
Okay. I have a second question, if I may, for Kevin Cronin. Could you, do you know what kind of cuts have already been made to adjust to get us through properly to the end of the year?
Yeah, I kind of mentioned the staff reductions to city hall staff. That has saved us some, some funds. And then in terms of our material and services budget, we're really trying to spend only the absolutely necessary amounts right now, and we're trying to change pennies to get to the finish line, which is June 30th. Those are probably the two biggest things that, that we've done so far.
And can you expand on that part where staffing was reduced? Can you explain what that means?
Yeah, so my predecessor, Brian, had decided to reduce the staff hours on Fridays to essentially a half day. And so I'd have to get back to you on what the cumulative savings of that have looked like since that was put into place, but that was one of the measures that my predecessor put in place.
Okay, I actually think I remember hearing that that was going to happen, but then heard that we are actually open on Fridays. We just aren't open to the public. So how does that, how would that actually help us in terms of our personnel costs if we still have staff?
They're, they're only there for half a day. Right, so there was some.
So two, two people are only there half day?
Correct. Yeah, because the court clerk right now is a part-time position. Is that correct, Colleen?
That's right.
I guess the only other savings that we have done is, you know, in terms of our hiring, we have not been able to hire anybody primarily because of labor shortage, but it's also helped us with our savings. So that, that may be our saving grace in terms of the vacancies that we have in police and fire. But with fire, we've got just astronomical overtime costs right now. So I don't know if we're going to have any savings at the end of the day. So that's, that's for me as your administrator, that's, that's the toughest nut to crack right now.
And I have one more question, but I'll take my hand down and let Audie go and come back.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Okay. You wasn't here then, Kevin. When it first started. Brian had city staff down in, in the city hall down to four days a week. And then we found out later on that the weren't open four days a week, five days a week, but they were paying the employees five days a week. Then they finally cut them off to four days a week. And then we got this $22 fee, and they opened city hall back up to four and a half days a week. And it's been that way since. So just, just for your information, that's, that's what happened. So they, they were open five days a week, but only to city staff on calls. And then later on, they closed it down to four days a week. And then they opened it back up to four and a half days a week. That's some information that I check into and see what's going on. And I don't know if that is saving more money or if it costs us more money. Four and a half days a week rather than four days a week. Thank you, I'm done.
Go ahead, Counselor Coker. That's what I, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Hooker.
Yeah, Chris, Mayor Hollitt, I just want to make sure I understood you right. I believe you said that this was the public safety fee was not just for the police, fire, and ambulance. Is that what you said, or did I misunderstand? Because I thought that is what that was for, strictly for that. Thank you.
Possibly somebody else could better answer it, but out of the last budget committee meeting, I remember that it was after long discussion, it was determined that really it was all of the city that was under financial stress, but we agreed that the public safety fee would only go to the police and fire.
Yeah, that is correct. So from a budgeting standpoint, and for those of us that were in the LSC budget training, all those go into a general fund pot, and then we, me as your administrator, Colleen as your finance director, I had to figure out how to allocate those resources to all the different funds, right? But we know where the cost drivers are, right? We know what's, what's driving some of those costs, so it ends up going into those, some of those general fund budgets that desperately needed in order to maintain a level of service. So I know that's kind of parsing words, but that's just how it works here in Oregon.
Thank you for that, Kevin. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Okay, you guys can tell me, this is not an appropriate question for this discussion, but it has to do with the ARPA funds. I was wondering if the city has made any like allocations of the ARPA funds to help like, for example, the emergency services. We were, we allocated $100,000 for COVID transports and stuff like that. Has any of that money been transferred for things like that?
That is an excellent question, Counselor. My proposed budget will have a table, whatever I understand of the allocations of council to date. We still have another tranche or another payment we're going to expect from the state through the feds on July 1st. Council has not provided direction on where those monies will go, but I will have it in my proposed budget in terms of where it can go. In terms of the specific COVID reimbursements, I have not received any requests from either police or fire for COVID reimbursements. So let's say police had to respond to a call and it was, it was a COVID person. Definitely, we can get reimbursed for that using ARPA funds or American Rescue Plan funds. But we haven't gotten to the point where we have submitted a reimbursement request to document that. So it's there, council has allocated it, and it's there if we need it, but we haven't gone through the paperwork to really document all of that.
And has, has the staff then been notified that they could be looking at that to, to grab those funds?
I believe we have talked about it in some of our prior staff meetings, but I will certainly be happy to reiterate that at our next staff meeting on Tuesday morning.
Okay.
And that, again, I think those allocations were actually done right before I came on board. So you know, I'm sure Brian is very good about sharing that information.
Okay. Well, I guess my last question would be is kind of in regard to what Mayor Hollitt was mentioning earlier, that we had hoped to be able to come to this work session and find out how what it would look like if we were to end the public safety fee. So from what it sounds like to me is that we really won't know that until we get into budget discussions.
Without getting into specifics in terms of the numbers, it's just going to compound the problem if we don't have additional, that additional fee coming in to be able to fill a projected deficit, and not just our current fiscal year, but starting July 1st. I have to figure out how to allocate what resources we have in order to fund each of our departments. So it would, it would drastically reduce my ability to present a balanced budget to the budget committee. And I'm, for the record, I am very looking forward to having a conversation with the budget committee about some of the choices that you're going to have to make. And let's be clear about that. We're going to have tough choices to make. Cuts, revenue, choices, all those things will be on the table. But I'm totally looking forward to talking to you guys about that here in a couple weeks.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, there's somebody on the Zoom user that is not muted, and
Yeah, Colleen, if you can mute that, that would be, that would be great. You, you as the, the host get to, to have that function.
Yeah, thank you. It kind of
Thank you.
leaves out a bunch of people, so. Okay, thank you.
So Mayor, as I mentioned to you earlier today, I think probably via text, I will try to get the PowerPoint that you just saw up to the budget portion of the website. I've been populating that, that page as a way to essentially create a library of resources for the community to track along. And so if council has other questions after the work session, I'm happy to entertain that during the business from the city council.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from counselors? Colleen and Kevin, did you have anything more?
No.
All right, well, if there are no more questions on the public safety fee, we are going to move on. We have a presentation next. Thank you, guys, for the information. I I hope that's enough for everybody to think about. I know I dotted down some questions that I might meet with Colleen and Kevin, just to pick your brain a little bit more about and see if we could have a couple more answers at the next meeting. If anyone else has some questions, I strongly encourage you guys to write them down, email them, so that they can get those answers back. The sooner the better. All right, moving on to item number five, which is the presentation from El Rapa. I see Travis online and Steve. I'm not sure if I see Steve there. But Travis, go ahead. You have the floor. And I guess I'll kind of just mention that I have gone to a couple of the El Rapa meetings, and after sitting through it, there was so much going on with representatives from all over the county, and much of the discussion had to do with Oak Ridge. So I thought it was really fair that our council, since many of you may not fully understand the large grant that El Rapa has been administering for Oak Ridge, I thought it was a good opportunity for him to come and just really kind of go over everything, what's going on in Oak Ridge that pertains to that grant, and just overall, any El Rapa questions you guys might have. I know I get a lot of questions about El Rapa, and just think there's some really big things that they've been doing for Oak Ridge. So go ahead, Travis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hollitt and Oak Ridge City Council. I sent, texted Steve here to see if he's hopping on. He planned on being here, and so I'm hopeful he'll be joining us here in just a second. But I have a presentation that we put together to talk about El Rapa, primarily But I have a presentation that we put together to talk about El Rapa, primarily our role when it comes to the targeted airshed grant or known as Oak Ridge Air in the community. And um uh looks like I got a text from Steve, Kevin, or I guess Colleen, it says he's in the personal waiting room. So I think he might still be in the waiting room of waiting, being let logged in. And while if you're looking into that, I will open up my presentation here and get that underway. There it is. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Welcome, Steve. We're about to join in into our presentation. I didn't know if you wanted to say a couple of words before I got going.
Turn my mute off here. I'm glad to be here tonight. Travis and I are gonna try to give you some information that some of you may have seen before, a little bit new information that we have. And I'm hoping that going forward that the relationship that we've already that has grown already so far continues to grow, and we do good things in the city of Oak Ridge and, and the town of Westford, so that we can continue to have good air quality for all the things that you guys like to do.
Thanks, Steve. And I got my presentation here. Sure, my screen. All right. Perfect. Thank you. Well, hello, Mayor Hollitt and Oak Ridge City Counselors. My name is Travis Knutson. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency. With me is El Rapa's Executive Director, Steve Dietrich, who just introduced himself. Thank you for letting us join here tonight and to talk a little bit about El Rapa and Oak Ridge Air and how the two of us work together to improve air quality in Oak Ridge and Westford. So to start off, I'll start a little bit explaining about who El Rapa is and what our role is in Lane County, particularly when it comes to Oak Ridge. We monitor the air quality throughout Lane County, which includes Oak Ridge. We have a monitor at the Willamette Activity Center at the WAC that we use to monitor the air quality and then report to the state and then honor to the federal government of what that air quality is. We also have installed multiple what are called purple air sensors throughout Oak Ridge. These are commercial-grade sensors that aren't as accurate as the more expensive government monitors that we have in that trailer. But they're very useful for providing some public information to the community about what air quality is and how it's changing. We're also the government agency that's responsible for issuing the Homewood Heating Advisory, such as saying when it's a green burn day or a yellow burn day or a red burn day. The yellow days being when we ask residents to voluntarily not use wood stoves. And then red is when it's prohibited, which is a city ordinance. But our responsibility is issuing what days those are going to be, whether it's green, yellow, or red. And then Mayor Hollitt represents Oak Ridge interests on El Rapa's board. We have nine members on the Board of Directors, four from Eugene, two from the city of Springfield, one from Cottage Grove, one from Lane County as a whole, and then one from Oak Ridge. And Mayor Hollitt holds that seat from, for Oak Ridge. So winter time wood smoke is an issue that impacts air quality in Oak Ridge. This here is a picture that was taken in an early morning sunrise picture where you can see some of that low clouds. It's actually wood smoke from wood stoves. What happens at night is our air cools down, temperatures drop because it's nighttime. And then all that cold air just sinks into the bottom of Oak Ridge's valley and it traps all the wood smoke that's being used into that low layer of air where, of course, everybody is exposed to it and then breathe it. And then when the sun rises and temperatures warm, that cold air starts to warm up as well and it's able to disperse. And then the sky is clear, and this is an afternoon picture where you don't see that smoke. So the winter time wood smoke, when it impacts air quality, is really a nighttime issue. So you don't see a lot of that smoke in the air for much of the day throughout Oak Ridge. But at night, when the sun sets and temperatures cool down, particularly in the winter, you can really see that be the case. And we can see that here in some of our air monitoring that we have across Oak Ridge. So what you're looking at, of course, is a map of Oak Ridge and Westford. And each of these little dots on the screen, these are those purple air monitors, those commercial-grade monitors that we've installed throughout the community. And the color coding represents how good or how bad the air quality is. So green, of course, is good. Yellow is moderate. When it gets into orange, that's unhealthy for sensitive groups. When it gets into red, that's unhealthy. And then purple is very unhealthy and maroon is hazardous. So I'm going to play this video through and you could see the arrow there on the bottom of the screen sort of progressing through time. This was recorded right around Halloween in October of 2020. So at nighttime, you can see that the air quality starts to degrade or you see more of the yellow and the oranges start to show up on the map. And then when the sun comes out and temperatures warm up and people aren't using their wood stoves because there's no need for it, the air quality improves. But then as we head back into the overnight hours, we start to see that air quality diminish once again. And this is not so much that something that happens during the summertime when things are warmer. People are not using wood stoves as much, and we don't have those nightly inversions where the cold air just sinks down into the bottom of the valley. But starting to get into really October, November, and into December to January is when it's Homewood Heating season, when these inversions happen pretty much every night. And you can see here as we get into November of 2020 during the nighttime hours, start to see a lot of orange, even some red showing up on the map on occasion. And this is a health concern for the community of Oak Ridge because everybody is breathing in this air, even indoors, that outdoor air can seep in. And the particulate matter pollution, which is the smoke essentially from wood stoves, that can have long-lasting impacts on the community, causing respiratory complications, heart problems, and long-term consequences. So it is something that can have an impact on the community. And that's where Oak Ridge Air comes in. The Oak Ridge Air Program is something that works to solve this problem and really improve that air quality issue that's seen in Oak Ridge. And it does it through multiple different ways. So we'll walk through what this, what these methods are and how it works. But it's, it's in short, is through Homewood Heating upgrades, through a community firewood program, through community and school education on air quality topics, providing air filters to homes, schools, and public buildings. And then as well as providing support for code enforcement of City of Oak Ridge's opacity limits, which set limits to how much smoke people can have coming out of each wood stove. And El Rapa's role when it comes to Oak Ridge Air is we are the grant administrator. So the EPA is the government agency that's providing the money that's funding Oak Ridge Air, which was $4.9 million awarded in 2019. And El Rapa, we were the agency that went to the EPA and submitted the application for this grant and secured that funding. So we have a responsibility to administer that grant, to provide oversight, and to be the ones who are held accountable to the EPA through quarterly and annually reporting of how those dollars are spent and showing that those dollars are having an impact. And then Oak Ridge Air is really a conglomerate of a whole bunch of partners that we all work together with the many different aspects of it to accomplish the work that's being done through the program, which it can be sometimes when Oak Ridge Air can seem a little me unsure with what exactly is going on. And that's because there are many different aspects to the program. It's really doing a lot of different things. There's a lot of different groups involved to work on these problems, but really are having a great benefit to the community. And one of those benefits is through Homewood Heating upgrades. So what that is, is it's essentially providing funding to homes to replace certified wood stoves. So if there's an older wood stove, the Oak Ridge Air can upgrade it, can spend money to weatherize homes and to conduct small home repairs, such as fixing a drafty window or door or adding some insulation to an attic, as well as installing a ductless heat pump into a home. And this is at no cost to the residents. You can see there's some of the information on the screen. That's some of the statistics we have of homes that have filled out a questionnaire with Oak Ridge Air. Forty-six homes are enrolled into the program. We've done some energy audits. We've installed six wood stoves. There's been 12 ductless heat pumps installed. Six homes have been weatherized and then three homes have completed it. And there's give or take, but there's about $15,000 available per home that enrolls into the program. And all of this work, all of this Homewood Heating upgrades, such as replacing a wood stove or doing some small home repairs or installing a ductless heat pump, that is all services that are provided to those in the program at no cost to the resident. This is something that is funded by that grant from the EPA, all in effort to put less smoke into the air, so that way there's less people breathing it and there's less health consequences on the community. Another aspect of Oak Ridge Air is providing dry seasoned woods to seniors, low-income, and disabled. This most recent winter, over a hundred cords of wood were delivered to residents. And this is dry seasoned wood, which can sometimes be really costly and difficult to get a hold of. So this is another effort that Oak Ridge Air provides to make that more accessible to the community members. So that way people are burning with dry wood, which results in less smoke being put into the air. And then another aspect is community education and information sharing, talking about these air quality issues, as well as talking about solutions, but then also informing Oak Ridge and Westford when there are air quality problems. Specifically, specifically, this was seen back in 2021 with the smoke that was moving into the community. There's a text service that people can subscribe to and to receive updates. You know, we'll text and let you know that there's going to be a red day or a yellow day. Or when wildfire smoke, prescribed smoke is supposed to move on in, there's a text update that lets you know and provides you with recommendations or things that you can do, such as closing doors and windows to ensure that smoke outside doesn't get indoors, all with the effort to reduce exposure to the smoke. Because of course, the less smoke we're breathing in, the less health consequences that'll have in our life, as well as coordinating with the Smoke Safety Plan, which is something that was recently put together by the Southern Willamette Forest Collaborative that describes the responses and the approaches that the community will take to assuring information when smoke moves on in is shared. And so everybody has an idea that there may be a pile burning that could potentially bring some smoke to the community or there's a wildfire that may bring smoke into the community. That's all laid out in the Smoke Safety Plan, and Oak Ridge Air coordinates very closely with that, so that way the community can be informed when those smoke intrusions happen. Another thing that Oak Ridge Air has done is provided HEPA air purifiers to the community, which this is something I think most people are familiar with when you bring up Oak Ridge Air. We distributed about 450 air purifiers throughout the community. But we also installed some air filters at Oak Ridge High School, did some HVAC retrofits, and have filter replacements for the high school, elementary school, and Oak Ridge Library. The program no longer has the budget to provide air purifier, so that, that's come and gone. But we still have a budget to replace the filters in those purifiers. And we mail out postcards every year. Once you've had your air purifier for about a year, you get a postcard in the mail that says, hey, it's time to replace that air filter, the HEPA filter, because that's really the important part. That's what screens out the particles and smoke. And those are available to be picked up at City Hall with that, that postcard. So that's an ongoing service that will continue for the next few years for the city of Oak Ridge and Westford residents to receive those air filters. And finally, code enforcement. So this provides funding to the city of Oak Ridge to enforce the city's smoke opacity ordinance and expand the education-focused diversion program. So that's getting with residents and explaining better ways to use the wood stove to create less smoke. And you can see on the image there, there's different examples of opacity limits, such as 75 opacity, which means it's blocking most of what you can see through it, versus 25 opacity, which the smoke stack is, the smoke is much more see-through. So this grant funding essentially provides the Oak Ridge Police Department with about $71,000 a year for five years. And that first started in the year 2020. So on the topic of timeline, how old is the program? Well, it first began, the first work first started in 2020. A lot of that was developing when it comes to the Homewood Heating upgrades, developing the program and running the first few homes through the pilot program for the Firewood, Community Firewood Program. Again, the first year was really focused on setting it up, getting the partners all at the table and chatting and, and creating the systems. Community education and information system, the first year focused on really developing these systems and then now implementing those systems that were developed in the first year. For the air filters, program creation was early on, and then the medical need-based distribution, that's where we took the filters and we're distributing them throughout Oak Ridge and Westford. And then now we're in the phase of replacing those filters to those who receive them on a yearly basis. And then the code enforcement that was developing sort of the relationships with the City of Oak Ridge PD to develop the program, diversion program. And then, excuse me, the remainder of it is monitoring and assisting that diversion program implementation and code enforcement. So we're in the spring or, yeah, spring now of 2022, so we're here. This is a five-year program. The timeline, of course, is approximate, and COVID-19 did delay some of this as we weren't able to meet in person and collaborate in that passion. Everything was remote, which did delay some of it. But we're, we're getting through that and things are going very well. So then the question becomes, are all of these efforts that Oak Ridge are doing, are they really having an impact on air quality? So what you see here is a graph and I'll walk through sort of what this explains. So the blue line is the annual average of basically smoke in the air or how much PM25, which is a pollutant that's in smoke that we measure. And you can see the general trend is in decline, which is the black line on the screen. The red dotted line, that is the 2006 standard. So that is a standard that was set by the EPA, by the federal government of saying this is where air quality should be. So over time, historical wood stove changeouts and education programs, such as explaining ways to use your wood stove that creates less smoke, has been really successful in improving air quality. Oak Ridge and Westford, the airshed is considered in non-attainment. And non-attainment basically means that the air quality is above this red line. Though recently, since about 2016, Oak Ridge's air quality has been below this red line. And because of that, we've been able to go to the EPA and ask them to redesignate Oak Ridge from what's called non-attainment, which is not meeting the standards that they set, to maintenance, which means you're meeting the standards, you still have to do work to make sure that those standards are being met, but you're meeting them. And we expect that EPA will approve that redesignation from non-attainment to maintenance in May of 2022. There is a little kind of tidbit though, or asterisk I should, I should say that goes along with that, is that EPA is considering lowering that red line once again in 2024. So that emphasizes the importance of Oak Ridge Air to continue to see air quality to improve. So that way, if EPA does consider lowering that standard, that red line, we'll have enough breathing room that we're not going to find ourselves back above that red line. Another important thing to talk about here, though, is wildfire impact on air quality. So the graph that I was showing, that is where we sort of took out all of the data that would be considered wildfire data. And this graph is when you include all of the air monitoring data that includes wildfire. And I'm sure nobody's really surprised to see this graph because the last few years, Oak Ridge and Westford have certainly seen a lot of smoke and be impacted by wildfires. And so the blue line is quite a bit higher. So the PM25 pollution created by wildfires is certainly a growing air quality problem in not only Oak Ridge, but the Pacific Northwest as well. There's plenty of communities all across Oak Ridge or Oregon that are seeing the same trend of their air quality degrading every summer because of smoke moving in due to wildfires. So when this happens, what El Rapa does is we create what's called an exceptional event report. And we take it to the EPA. Basically, we say, well, wildfires really shouldn't be held against Oak Ridge because it's something that's outside the community's control. So please take this data and excuse it and don't count it against the community. And EPA does approve those things, but it does take a lot of work and a lot of time to do that. And also, it emphasizes that the community is still experiencing this exposure to smoke, wildfire smoke. So just because the data is being sort of adjusted, doesn't really fix the issue or change the fact that everybody has been breathing this poor air. And of course, the PM25 pollution can be really impactful on our health. So it just emphasizes the need that during the wintertime, we want to have very clean air. So that way, when the wildfire smoke does move on in, there's been less exposure to that harmful PM25 pollution. So there is a local office for Oak Ridge Air. It's out at the industrial park. The location is there on your screen, on the phone number, there's the Facebook page, and we have a website as well. So a local presence in the community. This is a program that's ran by everyone who lives in the Oak Ridge and Westford area. So then a question that often comes up too, or I'm sure you're wondering, is how can Oak Ridge City Council help Oak Ridge Air? And essentially, that's spread the word. We still have quite a bit of budget available to those to enroll into the Homewood Heating programs to receive some of this beneficial work, to have a ductless heat pump installed. And there's no income restrictions to that. I know some people may think that it's really only designed for low income. And our air filter distribution and the Community Firewood Program do have some of those considerations. But when it comes to having a ductless heat pump be installed or a wood stove switched out, there's no low-income real consideration to that. We're just interested in upgrading, you know, as many woods We're just interested in upgrading, you know, as many wood stoves as possible and installing secondary forms of heat in people's homes. So anyone and everyone is certainly willing to sign up for this program and enroll into it. Both homeowners as well as renters can fill out the questionnaire to begin the process of signing up. And you can do so on the website there, oakridgeair.com/upgrades. Oak Ridge Air begins a new cohort of homes every season. So the spring season one just begun underway. In a couple of months, we'll be rolling into summer and then there'll be a fall. And this essentially will go on and repeat until the budget runs out from the EPA. And then that will be kind of the conclusion of the program. But on the topics of budget, just recently, El Rapa was able to secure a second targeted airshed grant from the EPA that was awarded really just kind of last week. It's not as big as the initial targeted airshed grant, but it is another $2.7 million in additional funding, which essentially will extend the program by about another two years. It'll allow many more homes to go through the programs. We'll be able to have those interventions for more community members. It does create more support for the city's yard waste disposal program, such as renting a tub grinder on a sort of as needed basis, sort of a seasonal basis to take that yard waste and to grind it up, which can be used for different things throughout the community, as opposed to having that yard waste be burned and then that smoke be introduced into the airshed where people are exposed to it and breathing it. It'll provide chimney sweep vouchers so people can have their chimney swept. It'll provide wood moisture meters to the community as well as wood stove thermometers provided to the community. Again, all of these efforts are at no cost to the residents. And then it will also fund some air quality research projects with the University of Oregon and OSU in the Oak Ridge area. So that was exciting news. El Rapa actually sent out a press release today, this afternoon detailing this because it's a recent development that we were really happy to be able to share with you today. So that's kind of a quick 101 of Oak Ridge Air and El Rapa's role in it. So I want to thank you guys for your time and Steve and I are here and available to answer any questions that you may have.
I was wondering if you could go back to the slide just before this one for just a minute?
Sure, let me reshare my, the one that shows the new. Let's see, I'll just share my screen again, you can drive me here. This one? Or the one before?
I actually haven't seen it yet. Oh, this one, yeah. If you could see there, I'm going to try and get a screenshot of that real quick so I can share it on on our social media.
No, that'd be great.
Thank you, I've got it.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff. You're muted.
I just wondered, that's just for the city limits, right? That's no one outside the city limits. So anybody up on High Prairie or anything that's burning, adding, because that all flows down into the valley here.
It is, it's beyond the Oak Ridge city limits. It's really Oak Ridge and Westford, it's the airshed. So there's, the EPA sort of designated a region around Oak Ridge and Westford that they consider to be the airshed. So it's really kind of just the ball that is Oak Ridge is that airshed. So any place that is within those boundaries can enroll in this program. So it isn't something that limited to just Oak Ridge city limits.
Okay, I was wondering because they log up there on High Prairie in other places and they burn their slash. And that just adds to our poor air quality with the, when the forest service comes around, they burn those piles. And is there any way that we could get the foresters to ship that stuff? Or mash it somehow instead of burning, because that adds a lot to it. You see the slash burning all over, it's not just, just around Oak Ridge, it's all over the place. And they really should be chipping it instead of burning.
I do know that when it comes to dealing with that slash that they have, it always comes down to a question of moving it somewhere so it can be chipped or bringing a chipper to it. And that always becomes a cost issue. When we do our looking into the airshed, we do what's called an emissions inventory. So that's where we look at all of the different things that could be contributing to or creating pollution in an airshed. And those studies that we've done has identified that the wood stove use, particularly at night when it's cold, that is when we see that the Oak Ridge air quality is at its worst. When the forest service burns, those slash piles are not generally doing it at night. We're doing it in, you know, when it's really cold and that, and the air sinks down into the bottom of the valley. So that's where most of the community ends up being exposed to this harmful PM2.5 pollution is from those cold nights when everybody's lighting their wood stove, which is why swapping out wood stoves for ones that burn more efficiently and don't create as much smoke is a real effective strategy to keep smoke out of the air. And then doing other things like installing ductless heat pumps so people don't have to use their wood stove if they don't want to. Or home weatherization, like throwing insulation into an attic. So that way the heat that is made, it stays in the house better and they don't have to burn as much wood to keep the home warm.
Okay, because I, I've been up on High Prairie and a few other places and just outside of town for Eugene, and they've got big slash piles and stuff. And just because you start the fire in the morning, doesn't mean it doesn't burn all night. It burns all night too, and that, that adds to the smoke here too. And it doesn't, it doesn't just stay at those piles. It, it comes into our little valley and that will run it clear down to Eugene too. So I was just wondering if that's something that has been talked about. Because what's, what's cheaper to lose human life because of the smoke or move the machinery to the slash piles?
Yeah, I think that's definitely a conversation to have when it comes to what Oak Ridge Air and what the EPA is funding. These are the interventions that have been funded for the program. So that's where our focus is at.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Mayor, Mayor Hollid, thank you. To add a little bit more to that, to that question that was asked. Yeah, a lot of the times the sources of these emissions, and he, that is a good point. That is another source of emissions that is considered. But when you have a program like this with the type of funding we have and the amount of time we have to actually use the funds, usually you concentrate with the areas or the causes of the greatest pollution. And it happens to be that even though the slash burning is a source of that kind of similar pollution, the wood stove is the bigger, bigger cause right now. So until you can, usually when you implement something like this, you start with the biggest sources of emissions and then work down the list. If it ever gets to the point where we run out of bigger sources of pollution, those are things that can be considered in the future.
Thank you, Steve. Does anyone else have any more questions? My only question was if we could go back to that slide and you had said there's a lot of money left for duck, the ductless heat pumps. If you could go back to that slide, I think that would be really important for us to push that out to our citizens. I'm sure there's a lot of people that could benefit from that and that don't even fully know. Maybe they pass it by because they think there's an income requirement or that it just won't work for their home. So for that, they need to go to, was it oakridgeair.org/upgrades? I think I wrote down. It was a slide towards the end. Oh, that, I gotcha.
Yep, and Mayor Hollid, you're correct. They, I do think that there is some assumption, at least for the home with heating upgrades, that there is a low income requirement to it. And the program does look at a greatest need first. So those who are of low income will likely get through the program before those who don't have that low income designation. But the goal here with the program is to swap out as many sort of, or wood stoves with cleaner burning ones that don't create as much smoke when you're using them, as well as provide as many secondary forms of heating. So anyone, regardless of income status, if the only form of heating you have in the home is your wood stove, you qualify to have a ductless heat pump installed in your home. There is definitely a timeline that goes along with this because we contractors have to come up to Oak Ridge, they have to take an assessment. And things are really busy with all the contractors everywhere. So it can, we're, one of the issues that we're dealing with is finding enough people who want to come and do the work in a timely manner because all the contractors are busy. But yes, if you only have a wood stove as your sole source of heat in your home, you qualify for this program and can have a ductless heat pump installed at no cost to you. And I don't think many people realize that. So that's something we're really trying to get out and make more widely known. Because the intent of this grant is to just have as many people enrolled in it as possible to do this work.
Gotcha. So I do, I'm looking at the picture that you have right there. And I think a question that I've heard come up a lot is people don't want to give up their wood stove. And I can certainly understand why after our snowmageddon, a lot of us, including myself, turned to our wood stove to stay warm. So in Oak Ridge, a lot of people are going to be really apprehensive of to give up their wood stove. So what you're saying is that that's not a requirement. And the possibility, it looks like from the photo you've shown, that looks like a pretty old wood stove to putting in a new, more efficient one?
Right. What's been really popular that we found are these wood stoves that have catalytic converters on them that burn quite a bit better and even warmer. That, you know, we've heard that people with older wood stoves will upgrade to the newer ones. And they're just amazed at how much more heat it puts off because it is so much more efficient of a device. And yes, this program is not asking anybody at all to give up their wood stove because it acknowledges that, you know, first of all, electricity is not terribly reliable when all that snow is there. And that too, electricity can be expensive. And also there's just something nice about having a wood stove that's kind of homey. And that's a big part of Oak Ridge and, and, and living in Oak Ridge. So the program is not asking or requiring anybody to give up their wood stove. It's just replacing it with one that is more efficient and then providing a secondary form of heat. And something too, that's important to point out that I don't think many people realize is those ductless heat pumps also work as cooling devices. So during the summer, you can turn it on and it will cool your house. So it's essentially kind of like an air conditioner that you have benefit in the summertime. Even though the intent is to provide heat in the winter, those ductless heat pumps will cool your homes in the summer as well. And that's a benefit that's just kind of comes along with having a ductless heat pump.
Thank you, appreciate that. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Yeah, I was actually wondering if you have any data on, on how the code enforcement part of this grant has helped improve our air quality overall?
That would be a question that's really best answered by Oak Ridge PD itself. The intent or the idea here, historically, whenever there would be a yellow day or a red day, and we'd have some wood stove curtailment that was taking place in the community. The way it works is El Rapa has compliance officers who come up to the community. And we only take an education approach. So El Rapa doesn't issue any tickets to any community members in Oak Ridge. That's done by the city through the PD department. And so the intent is to provide extra funding to allow Oak Ridge PD to essentially hire another police officer to help with that during winter time when wood stove season is taking place. But it also acknowledges that this is a full-time position and winter time wood smoke isn't just, it's not an all year round thing. So you do have that extra FTE essentially with Oak Ridge PD all year round. But the documenting all of that enforcement that's taking place in the program is something that's done by Oak Ridge PD. And so they would have more insight into that than we could really provide right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'm happy to follow up on that question at a later time.
Sure, I think that would be great. Do you have anything more, Counselor Kenyon?
Oh, no thanks, I'll take my hand down.
Any more counsel, questions to Travis or Steve? Well, thank you guys for coming, for joining us tonight and giving that presentation. We really appreciate it. I feel like I got some good information that I can push out and I think all of us can push out to the citizens.
Mayor Hollid, glad to be here tonight.
Thank you, guys.
I'm happy to put the PowerPoint on the city's website to help broadcast the good information you've shared tonight. And I want to give a shout out to Grace, our rare mayor core participant who kind of joined us late. But she's an extraordinary person on our staff, at least for the next couple of months. And she's benefited your organization and she's certainly benefited the city of Oak Ridge. So shout out to Grace.
Yeah, I'll send you slides, Kevin. And I just wanted to chime in a bit as well from El Rapa's perspective. Grace is wonderful and so vital to so much of the work that's done. So thanks, Grace, we appreciate all your work.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, next up on our regular meeting is to go into any additions or corrections or adjustments to the agenda. Does anyone have anything? All right, seeing none. Into public comment. Colleen, do you have anyone there at City Hall for public comment?
I do not.
Okay, so if there's anyone in the Zoom audience, you can raise your hand to let me know that you have public comment. And I don't see the hands raising. I'll give it just another couple minutes, couple seconds. All right, into mayor comments, announcements and proclamations. The only announcement I have for tonight is we participated in the Oregon Mayors Association If I Were Mayor Contest. And so I kind of got a late notice on that, but I went ahead and pushed it out anyways. And I spoke to the elementary school and they had already pushed it out. So they have selected a couple winners for that. So hopefully at the next meeting, we will announce who was chosen for the Oak Ridge School. I know there was a lot of kids that wrote on it. So I'm kind of excited to see what they have. And then maybe we'll email that out. And I hope, I'm sure Kevin would be happy to post those on our website. So that's kind of exciting to see what they got out there. There should be one winner per grade level, and that's four, five, fourth and fifth. I think six is considered junior high. So fourth and fifth, I'm sure entered. And then those winners for our school go to the state contest. And then from there, they could win up to a $500 prize. So it'd be interesting if one of our kids wins. And that is the only thing that I have. I did want to remind everybody that tree planting is coming up May 7th. So I hope we have a really good attendance to this from our elected officials. It's kind of a big year for tree planting. They're really trying to get back on their feet and get things going again. And I think this year is going to be pretty big. Counselors, any council comments or announcements?
Oh, actually, Mayor, I do.
Go ahead.
Um, I wanted to remind the council because I was reminded in my email that we need to make sure our SEI filing is done by April 15th.
Thank you.
And everyone should have an email about that. And there's links to click to follow to get that taken care of.
Thank you, thank you. And I forgot one thing, I did want to thank everybody for attending the budget meeting class online. There was a lot of people I saw on there from Oak Ridge, including Kevin. And I think I saw Colleen on there and lots of people. So that was really nice to see so many people on there and lots of people asking questions.
I think we set a record for most from, from the city, from Oregon. That's just my personal opinion, though.
I wouldn't be surprised, it's nice. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Yes, I'd like to know, is there going to be any Easter egg hunting this year?
Yeah, so I was notified about a little less than two weeks ago that the Kiwanis is no longer doing the event since they have kind of, I hope this is correct, but I think they disbanded their Oak Ridge organization. So at that time, I asked the fire department and the police if they would be interested in hosting the Easter egg hunt. And Chief Martin said yes. And um, Chief Martin said yes, and the fire department people said yes. And then um, we were in discussions and around the same time, the Moose Lodge uh, said that they wanted to also get involved. So it sounds like the three of us will be getting together. It'll be the Moose Lodge and um, fire and police putting it together. And it is kind of um, a late start, not kind of, it's definitely a late start. But I do think the, the typical event that you'll see at Green Waters will be happening again this year.
Okay, so will it be Green Waters on Easter morning?
No, it's usually the day before Easter, so Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there some, is there some way that is going to be posted out to the public or?
Yeah, I just, it's just a late start. So it hasn't made it to social media yet, but it should be coming out any day now.
Okay, because it's getting real, real close.
I'm aware.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kenyon?
Yeah, I just wanted to also do a shout out to Kevin Cronin for the um, organization and the follow-up on the Budget Committee training. I think that that was um, probably a big reason why we had such a large turnout. And I really think there was like 10 of us there um, all together, 10 or 11 maybe even. It was, it was pretty phenomenal. So thank you very much, Kevin, for organizing all of that. It was wonderful.
Agreed. Any more council comments? All right, let's go on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion? And oh, I'm sorry, just for the record, Counselor Whitney has been with us for um, probably most of the El Rapa discussion. I'm not sure how much longer. So if we could let the record reflect, she had a hard time getting in, but she's been with us for a while now.
All right.
Thank you.
And a motion for consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Spleeloff. Colleen, can you call for the vote?
Uh, Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counsel, uh, Mayor Hollis?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
And Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Right?
Motion carried. Thank you. Under appointments, we have one application for Budget Committee. And I um, saw him logged on. It looks like Benjamin Sachdeva. I'm so sorry if I pronounced that horribly.
Good evening. No, I thought it was pretty close.
Okay.
Pronounced it.
Okay.
Can we have this uh, paperwork put up on screen, please?
Well, thanks for applying, Benjamin. Do you uh, live in Oak Ridge?
I do. Yeah, I moved here um, in uh, October of last year. And so I'm up here full-time. I work remotely for a healthcare organization um, that uh, is based in Coos and Curry Counties. Um, so I'm new to Oregon. I moved out here in uh, 2020 and I was down in Eugene for a year. Um, but I'm a big mountain biker and so working remotely, uh, I chose to leave the big city and come up here. So I've been here full-time since uh, since last fall. And I have a background. I have some experience and I used to work for, I came from Colorado where I worked for a municipality in a financial capacity for their Parks and Recreation Fund, um, and later as a Assistant Director uh, for the, for the city. Um, so uh, I've moved out here and was working with E-Web uh, before my current position. And so I've been in sort of a financial analyst capacity um, and sort of uh, touching on a budget operations in one way or another. So um, I'm looking forward to uh, hoping to serve the community uh, in, in sort of that capacity.
Okay, thank you, Benjamin. Are you able to pull that up, Colleen? Oh, you're muted, hon.
I'm trying to get it up. I didn't know I was going to have to pull it up, so.
Okay. Let's just go ahead and start with questions. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Yes, I went to your uh, resume, pretty uh, pretty good resume uh, that you sent in. I wanted to ask how come you didn't uh, apply for the uh, position down at City Hall?
Yeah, it's funny. Uh, it's a good question. I uh, it actually came, I had just accepted a position with this healthcare organization. Um, I'm, I'm, I've been interested in the healthcare uh, industry. Uh, it's one of the, if you see my resume, I've not worked in the healthcare industry and Oregon has a unique kind of a health plan, the Oregon Health Plan, how they administer sort of some of those services. And uh, so I was looking to get into the healthcare industry and I had just accepted the position. Um, I think right when that um, well, when that position became available with the city of Oak Ridge and so, bad timing.
Okay, well, I, that's just why, because I seen your resume and it's quite impressive, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I am really impressed with your service that you've done.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I have to sort of uh, provide some of that uh, you know, some of that experience uh, on the Budget Committee. So um, we'll see, we'll see where things go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you, um, Mayor. And Benjamin, thank you for applying. It is uh, really fantastic to see someone with your kind of background who's interested in um, participating in our community budget process, which is huge. Um, but I did want to ask you if you're a registered voter in Oak Ridge?
I am. I uh, did that. Uh, I believe I registered when I moved to, did the uh, change of address and everything. But I believe I'm um, registered. I got a, something from Lang Community or Lane County just recently in the P.O. box, so.
Okay, then you are.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Do we have any more questions from council? Um, did we, do we have a one-year residency or is that only for counselor positions?
That's only for council. I actually looked that up today in the Oregon Budget Law Manual. It just says you have to be a resident and a registered voter.
Good, thank you.
So how long is the term for?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
So do you think you'll be here for three years, Benjamin?
I do. I do. I've uh, it's a great community. I'm, I guess I'm a mountain biker. And so um, you know, it's world-class. And I'm surprised that there's a sort of not more folks in the mountain bike community that uh, have found this secret. But uh, you know, I think growing in a small place at a, at a realistic pace is kind of what drew me to this community. It was kind of down-to-earth feel and um, you know, it has, it has a unique character and I kind of like that. So hoping to kind of uh, serve, serve the community in some capacity.
So you said that you already have a background in municipal budgeting?
I do, primarily from Colorado. I mean, I was in Colorado when I was working for municipality. Um, but I've kind of reviewed some of the documentation, the uh, local budgeting document um, on the process for, for Oregon. And so it seems very similar. Um, uh, it's just I guess, I think we were, you know, the main difference is the fiscal year. I think it's June to July for Oregon.
Uh, July 1st.
Yeah, July 1st. And um, but yeah, so I've, I've familiar with the process in, in some kind of, at the high level.
Cool. Well, good to hear. Um, have you paid attention to the financial struggles that we're going through currently?
I have, more so since my, I've met Kevin and had a conversation. Um, when I moved up here, I did remember kind of reading about the, just the fallout from the um, previous administration or administrator. Um, but uh, it doesn't seem, you know, I understand it seems like there's challenges ahead. Um, and so being kind of an, you know, I'd, I'd like to use some of my experience to help inform or give, offer perspective um, to the committee. And so be part of kind of more um, more or less, you know, and then, you know, provide analysis or in some of my experience. In Colorado, I had a lot of experience, we had, I was in a resort community. And so we had a fairly high sales tax um, that was kind of aimed at, at tourist dollars. And so that's something that is, doesn't really exist in this state. And so the uh, sort of toolset, I think um, to sort of address some of these issues will be interesting to me to see some of the different levers we have um, based on the unique, uniqueness of the state. So um, yeah, I think that's, that the, the uh, sort of budget shortfall is actually what kind of inspired me to volunteer. Um, be part, you know, as a resource, if nothing else.
Well, great. That's good to hear. I, I would hate for somebody to apply thinking this is going to be a real easy, you know, sit-back uh, budget season. It's definitely not going to be.
No, no, I'm, yeah, and I, and I am well aware of the commitment in terms of the time. But uh, yeah, I'm, I'm a mountain biker, so I'm used to struggling and having to climb the hills before descending, so. Um, not, not, not shy of work.
Uh, well, I don't have any more questions. Does anyone else? Audi, did you have another question?
If there's no other questions, I'd like to uh, make a motion.
Okay, go ahead. Are, are there any more questions? Okay, go ahead, Audi.
I'd like to make a motion that Benjamin, and I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name.
You can try. It's Sachdeva.
Okay. Serve a term of three, three years on the Budget Committee?
I'll second that. This is Counselor Bjornson.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Counselor Spleeloff and seconded by Counselor Bjornson. Colleen, will you call for the vote?
Yes. Mayor Hollis?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
And Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for your service. It looks like you're um, stuck for three years with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I look forward to it.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Good to meet you. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
All right, uh, next item up is 12.1, follow-up from the work session. This is an opportunity if ever, anyone has um, any direction that they would like to pursue um, coming out of that work session. Because as you know, we don't make motions um, or vote in a work session. So if you have any motions or any directions you want to give, coming from that, now is the time. I know for myself, I have some follow-up questions that um, financial questions I'm gonna, I've got in my notes for Colleen and Kevin. So I'll open the floor for anyone else that has anything on the, if they have anything.
Uh, Mayor, I'm reviewing my notes to see if I have any follow-up.
Um, I do have one thing I'd like to ask if we could get the information is um, could we, could we have some numbers presented that show how much money we have saved in personnel um, by reducing the staff to a half-day?
Uh, I'm going to try my best to work with Colleen on that for the meeting on the 21st. And if I can't get it in time for the packet deadline of the 14th, I'll certainly bring it to, to the Budget Committee meeting. Um, certainly by the 25th, we can, we can put something together.
That's all I have.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff. You're muted.
I can't remember, but is it, did you say something about the special district in the?
Um, that's later down in the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so if there's nothing else about the work session, I'm going to move on. Um, business from the city administrator. Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So we've got two rental permits in front of you. Uh, both of them have um, alcohol permits. That's why they're in front of you tonight. Um, I do have a council action forum to help with, to guide you on each of those items. And I did invite uh, each applicant to join us tonight in case there are questions from council. Uh, with that, um, your, your best bet is to ask the applicant's questions and not the new guy. But I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
So we're talking about 13.1 here, correct?
Yeah, uh, gravel grinder is first on the agenda and then uh, concerts in the park is next.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I move to approve the rental permit application for the Oregon Trail Gravel Grinder Event.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Coker. Any discussion?
Um, I wondered if we could scroll down slowly through the um, permit so I can be refreshed if I have any questions.
And I'm guessing that this uh, Zoom user that's breakaway is our gravel grinder guy? Okay.
I am. Thank you, folks. I appreciate you. Give us consideration.
So if you guys have any question, it looks like he's here to answer them. Um, I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering how many years uh, you guys have been doing this event?
Um, we've done it two successful years. Uh, we had the uh, the year off in 2020 because of, of COVID. We did uh, reinstate it last year. Um, last year, in the first year in 2019, we ran this event. We only were in uh, Green Waters Park one, one night and one day. Um, but the riders really, really like Oak Ridge. So now we're doing it for two nights. And um, it gives them a chance to kind of rest and relax. Because most of the time, every single day, we'd have to pick up camp and, and move it. So they get one night off where they can stay in the same location two nights and they really enjoy Oak Ridge. Um, many of them were camping out at Green Waters Park, but many of them still go into town and, and check out the different restaurants and, and um, and get a beverage in town as well.
Awesome. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I don't think I wrote down any questions for this. I was hoping to see, um, but maybe I, maybe I can find it on my own computer. Um, nope, I don't think I had any questions on this one. And thanks for, for uh, continuing to come back to Oak Ridge with your event. I appreciate that.
We, we appreciate it. We've really thoroughly appreciated the, the hospitality and the professionalism of your staff um, through and through, from the police department to Public Works and the parks. Um, it's been a real joy of working with, with you and, and, and your crew. So we appreciate the opportunity to, to partner with you, all of you folks on this event.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just uh, reading through your permit here.
I, I will say this, um, this is not a, a super rowdy bunch. Um, because they're having to ride between 65 and 90 miles per day. It's usually at one beer and, and to bed. It's, in fact, we even bought a whole bunch of cornhole games and, and different lawn games. And uh, they won't even use, they grab dinner, they grab a beer and they head to bed. They're pretty tired, so.
Do, um, any more questions? All right, uh, Colleen, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker? Come back in a sec. Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Mayor Hollis?
Aye.
And Counselor Coker?
We didn't hear you, Counselor Coker.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Just barely.
Just barely.
Hey, guys.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you guys for bringing business back to Oak Ridge again. It sounds like a really fun event.
Awesome. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, next one up is concerts in the park.
Yeah, this is almost a carbon copy, obviously different dates. Uh, Renee, it looks like she is zoomed in, so, um, Mayor, if, uh, council has any questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any. And I think council should probably be pretty familiar with this one.
Yeah. Um, let's go ahead and put a, get a motion on the floor.
I move to approve the rental permit application for the concert.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion made by Counselor Kenyon and who was it that seconded?
Counselor Hooker and I think Bobby did, or Counselor Whitney did too.
Okay. Um, we'll go with Counselor Whitney, because I think that's who I heard. Open for discussion and Renee Goldman, go ahead. You can take yourself off mute in case anyone has questions for you.
I, I am off mute. I am here. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I actually have a quick clarification, uh, clarification question for Kevin. Um, Kevin, do you think that we need to include in these motions for both permits that we would be approving the alcohol use application?
Oh, are you suggesting you want that in the motion itself or?
I'm asking you if you think it's necessary considering the way the motion is, um, recommended. It doesn't mention the alcohol part.
So that's a, that's a procedural choice for the person making the motion. If we're following Robert's rules, um, I don't think it's a legal, uh, question. Um, so really, I think it's a, it's a procedural choice of the person making the motion.
I do see that it is all listed in the, the event, um, it.
Permit.
Permit. The event permit is all on there. So if you were going to approve the event permit, you would think one would look at the permit to read it to find out what's being approved.
Very true. So, um, I, I won't make any friendly amendments. I think we're probably okay. Um, as far as questions go, I had none for the applicant. I'm very familiar with, uh, the program.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Bjornson.
Yeah, kind of along the same lines as Counselor Kenyon, um, this one includes a fee waiver. So, um, I wanted to make sure we all noticed that and that in voting for this, we're agreeing to the fee waiver. I didn't know if Counselor Kenyon or who made the motion wanted to, um, do a friendly amendment and add that into the motion as well, just to be clear, or not.
I actually would like to amend the motion for that. Um, so I'll restate the motion. Thanks for pointing that out. Um, I move to approve the rental permit application and the fee waiver for the concerts in the park events.
And Counselor Whitney, do you, um, accept that?
Yes, I second that.
Okay. Who made the original? Was it Counselor Kenyon?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so motion back on the table in addition to accept the fee waiver. Discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Yes, so it's got a fee waiver in here and, and on what's, just waive the whole fee and not pay anything. I know, because we talked it at different times of we would do some and we wouldn't and I don't know if we've ever made a clear distinction of whether we're gonna do fee waivers or not.
Do you want to let me speak to that, Mayor?
Um, yeah, I was actually thinking maybe Renee could even speak a little bit about, um, what they're charging and those types of things. Is this a free event, alcohol, those types of things? But go ahead, Kevin.
I'll let Renee speak to the specifics of the event, but in terms of fee waivers, the, a lot of cities have specific policies on the books through usually resolutions. Um, and I did not get a chance to, to see what we have on the books in terms of fee waiver policy. If you don't have a policy, then it's up to the council. If they do elect to do a fee waiver, it has to come out of the budget somehow. And so in Warrenton, the city commission there just took it out of the, the city council training budget as a way to show support to community groups. For instance, we had folks going to the community center wanting to do, you know, Easter stuff or, or whatever. Um, the council doesn't really have a council training budget left, so I would need some direction from council in terms of where to take it from. And I, I don't need to remind you about our budget situation right now.
Well, I was wondering, don't we have, what is, is ARPA or one of those? I'm not sure which fund it is, but we sometimes take it out of one.
I think maybe you're thinking of RTMP.
Yeah, RTMP, yes.
Yeah. So Renee, I have a couple of questions that maybe could help us. I see that you guys are, um, doing a beer garden, I assume. So I'm curious, are you guys a nonprofit group? Um, you know, the money that you're receiving in for the beer garden and those kind of things, where does that money go? And maybe if you could help enlighten us a little bit on why you guys are hoping for the fee rate waiver.
Okay, I will start from the beginning. Yes, we do have a big gar, beer garden, beer wine garden that is safely, um, put aside of, this has been done for probably about two decades. So a lot of people may be familiar with what it's looked like. We're just wanting to continue the tradition of having a, it's a free community event at Greenwater Park. Um, so no one pays unless they purchase something from the vendors who are allowed there to be free or if they want to come to the beer garden and purchase a beverage or the food vendors that are there. It's an open community event as it always has been. So we are a nonprofit and where the money goes, I mean, we've had different sources of places we sent it. Basically, we just put the money back forward to concerts in the future. I mean, this is where our funds are. This is where we are. This is why we ask so that we may continue going to the future. The amount of money we even spent for porta potties this year was $500 because with gas fees and everything going up. So it is important that we want to go forward and allow this community event to go forward without saying that we will never have it again if we use everything we had and do not have community support, because it is a community event and we need the city and the community to support us in order to go forward with that. Did I answer?
Can we?
Yeah, I'm kind of curious what kind of revenue you guys bring in from the beer garden.
Uh, I, I would have to actually give you the books on that and we'll look at that in a moment, but pretty much, again, what we, we carry covers our bands and our sound and the equipment that we need to do everything. I mean, that, that is where all our revenues go. So, you know, we do have reserve because we've asked for sponsorships in the past and they have not some of them have left our sponsorship to go forward because we've been trying this for the last two years again. So we do have that, but we haven't reached out for any other support in the community, knowing what difficult time it is. We think we can do this on this time and, and see how we reboot ourself again on the budget. If we could have the waiver and use the money for the other things that are pertinent, like the porta potties and, um, our, our bands and our equipment, because if we don't have, if we don't have a band, if we don't have music, there isn't a concert in the park. So that's where it goes.
Yeah.
Do you have any way that we could use it from, take the fee from the RTMP funds then?
And if it falls under the guidelines, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon. I think you wanted to answer that.
Um, kind of. I do know that we did establish some, some guidelines for RTMP this year. Um, I don't remember if that was in there or not on fee waivers. I believe we discussed creating those new policies under the TRT program that we are talking about. Um, I mean, it's, our committee needs to get together and make that policy suggestion to bring forward to council. So beans, how it has not been established yet, I would recommend that we do transfer the money from the TRT program at this time and, um, look into establishing that policy in the very near future.
I would, I would also agree with that.
Yeah. Um, my, I hope last question or go ahead, Counselor Bjornson.
I was just gonna say that I agree with what Counselor Kenyon just said.
Yeah. Um, Renee Goldman, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look at our, um, RTMP application. We made some modifications to it and I know you're not applying for RTMP funds, but, um, I think this would, could be an opportunity for you to take a look at that application, because, um, you know, possibly in the future, concerts in the park might want to apply to RTMP. Um, and one of the things that we're really hoping for out of that is that groups that are bringing in, um, possibly people from outside of Oak Ridge really try to help promote Oak Ridge for overnight stays, visiting restaurants, all those kind of tourism things. So, um, in the future, if you guys were able to show us, you know, brochures, flyers, maybe, um, advertisements that you have on, um, Eugene Weekly or, you know, the Oregon Tourism stuff or just anything that you have out there. Those are really kind of important issues or important things for us that we really want to see when we're giving out those funds. So, and I know that's probably brand new news to you, but, um, yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm, um, willing to give the waiver, but that's what I would like to see from you guys is that you really do some good marketing out to areas outside of Oak Ridge.
I think it's not too late to apply for those funds as well.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Let me know when I'm supposed to speak.
Go ahead, Renee.
Oh, I'm saying, yes, thank you. And I did, I did read, and with the new things, I do realize that we sort of really always need to know what we're looking at financially in advance before we even apply now. We can't just predict. We kind of need to know, because it's, it's point by point um, of each event by event. So it has changed some and we have definitely applied through the years and it's a source that of course, and we do advertise in different areas and that is extremely important. Concerts in the Park is very conscientious about bringing in people from outside our community as well as providing for our community. So I definitely would look at that again and, you know, depending on the waiver, but there are other things that we can still look at our MTP for advertisement and things like that. We definitely would like to go forward with. That is without question.
Does anyone else have any questions, um, for Renee or any, um, remarks on what I commented on? Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I want to apologize for speaking kind of out of turn a minute ago, but also reiterate that, um, it is not too late to apply for those funds for this year. We actually changed the policy very recently that, um, makes it like a revolving all year long. It's open to apply, so, um, go ahead and, and consider that for, for these events.
Dawn.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Yes, of course.
Counselors Spleeloff, did you have anything?
Yes, so, so are we gonna take it out of those funds this time?
Um, Dawn, do you want to amend your motion? Or does it need to be?
Yes, it does. I'd like to request we direct the city administrator to transfer the amount from the TRT fund to cover the fee waiver.
And Counselor Whitney, do you accept that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do you have all those changes, Colleen?
Do.
All right, hearing no more discussion. Colleen, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Spleedoff.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Whitney.
Aye.
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
And Mayor Hollitt.
Aye.
Right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for your time and we very appreciate it. Hope you'll come see us at Concerts in the Park.
We'll be there. Go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, yes, so I just want to give council a quick update on the well number two, uh, bid package is officially on the street. Um, it is, uh, gonna be advertised for the next, so I think two or three weeks. City engineer will collect those bids, review them, make sure they're qualified and then he'll present me, uh, the preferred bid and then I get that back to you. You act as a contract review board. Council chooses to accept one of those bids. You know, May 5th is kind of pushing it. It'd be really tight, so it's more probably gonna be more, more your second meet in May. I'm thinking right now in terms of getting that in front of you, but I just wanted to make the council aware of that project. It's a, it's a pretty big project for our well system.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, Kevin, could you please describe again who you submitted that bid package to? I didn't quite catch it.
Yeah, so the city engineer, they do the bid process for us and so they handle all that paperwork, if you will. Um, and so it's advertised and we're hoping we get a few good ones, a few competitive ones. And, uh, we'll take a look at those and, uh, make a recommendation to council hopefully in May.
Um, I apologize, but for some reason you're cutting out. Could you just clarify? Are you saying the city engineer?
Yeah, it's, uh, Karen McLeod is our city engineer.
Okay. I was missing that part.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, is it possible for the council to see the, um, the RFP that was, that is being put out?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to get a PDF from, from Ed and share it up with the council.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Kevin on the well number two? All right, on 13.4.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, one, I've, I've done a lot of code enforcement work in my heyday, uh, doing this for the last 25 years. Um, when you do kind of the city planning thing, usually, uh, code enforcement is part and parcel. Uh, in small towns, a lot of it's being done by police departments like here in Oak Ridge, like it was done in Mount Angel where I came from. So, um, unfortunately, a lot of cities don't have a chronic nuisance ordinance. Uh, but it is a fantastic tool that the city council, uh, should consider. Uh, because one of the first things that I had to deal with when I came on board was a chronic nuisance. It was a, a repeat offender property. Um, I can't, I can't get into the specifics of the property address or anything like that. I don't have that information at my fingertips. But the, the point is, we need to give more tools to our police department to be able to deal with repeat offenders. And essentially, as I, as I describe it in my council action form, it, if, if, if the same offense or similar offense happens within a certain time period, let's say six months, you accelerate the process. It gets streamlined. You don't have to go through the, all the steps. It goes right to citations or it can go right to abatement. It's up to the city administrator and the police chief to really determine what the best tool is. But it really, it really provides an accelerated program to go after, uh, the uh, the repeat offenders and the chronic problems and then therefore improve the livability of your neighborhoods. Uh, so it's something that the chief and I talked about and he would love to have on the books. So I am suggesting to council, if you want to direct staff, I'm happy to, to get an ordinance in front of you at a future meeting.
Uh, well, for me personally, I am definitely in favor of this and I fully support to help our police department to do better in their job, whatever the tools they need. My question is what, for terminology, chronic? You know, is that two times, five times, 10 times? What do we classify as chronic? And then what is our process for, for, you know, how do we, is it a verbal thing first, then written? How does that part work?
Yeah, those are all great questions and that's really up to, to, for council to set that policy. Uh, what I did is I put an example from the city of Warrington that I got adopted with that city commission. Uh, and so if we want to use that as a template, we can certainly start there. And if council wants to give feedback to staff on either questions or, or issues with that draft, certainly we can, we can amend it and revise it. Um, but that's a, that's a really good starting place and that's helped, uh, the city of Warrington tremendously and not to toot my own horn, but in the two years I was there, I was able to essentially have a non-existent code enforcement program. And literally before I had left, and in two years, we addressed 60, 60 cases. And so it just, it, it did amazing things for Warrington and is, it looks completely different now. So I think Oak Ridge could stand to benefit from a similar policy.
Thank you, Kevin. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for city council consideration at a future meeting. Also to provide information to the charter review committee for a recommended update of the charter.
I'll second that. This is Counselor Hooker.
Uh, motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Hooker. Any more discussion? So by your motion, Dawn, are you saying that this ordinance would be written into the charter or would it affect the charter in any way?
No, I think they're two separate things that need to be done. An ordinance sets a policy that the police can follow. And he's reckoned a charter update to help set it in stone, I think.
Yeah. When we do meet, uh, counselor, I'm, I can have chief talk about administrative warrants or I can get the information from him and share it with you at the next charter subcommittee meeting.
Okay. So I was just curious, um, by the two together like that.
Well, I made the motion that way because I wanted it to be really clear that an ordinance cannot change the charter ever. A charter change has to be, uh, something that's presented on the ballot for the entire city to vote on. So I wanted it to be really clear that those are two separate things.
Okay. Gotcha. Go ahead. Or did you have anything else, Counselor Kenyon?
No, that's everything I had.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yes, I think that the city would really benefit from something like this. So I agree totally. It's just, you know, would help our police enforce the code enforcement around here and help clean up our city a little bit because we're getting a lot of complaints of nuisance.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, I agree with what, um, Counselor Kenyon said. You know, their charter sets our laws first and then the ordinance is kind of, it kind of is underlying under that further defines our charter. So, um, I think it's fine how she made the motion and I think it was a really good idea.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right. Let's call for the vote.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
And Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Did you have anything else for city administrator report tonight, Kevin?
I do not, Mayor. I think I've probably taken up too much time of the, of the council already. So, thank you.
Not at all. Committee reports. I have one thing to report on for a special district committee. I did attend the last Hazeldale Board meeting and I gave them the same speech that I gave this group. I, it's been a couple of months. I wasn't able to make it to their meeting before because I actually had COVID in, in February. So I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I attended the March meeting and gave them the same presentation I gave our group. Bobby, is your hand still up or is that accidental?
No, that's accidental.
Okay, good. So, um, unfortunately, they didn't have their whole board in attendance on their meeting night, which that was the March 24th meeting night. So they were, I would say they had a positive take on it and being involved. However, they said they were going to hold their final decision at the next meeting, which if I'm correct, their next, uh, board meeting should be April 28th. Their board meetings are the last Thursday of every month. So as soon as they decide if they are 100% going to be involved in our joint committee, they will decide on which board members. I think they might be going through some transitions with board members um, here in the near future. So that's a part of their decision process. And if you recall, we do have two, uh, council members from Westford and I think, uh, Mayor Cornelius was going to be involved as well, um, with our committee. So the first step, it would be, um, and just as a reminder, Counselor Spleedoff and Counselor Bjarnson are heading this committee with me and, um, or I should say, sitting on this committee with me. So our first step would be talking about that feasibility study, getting all three players or partners involved and talking about hiring a feasibility consultant and also pulling in people from, um, all three jurisdictions, Hazeldale, Westford and the city of Oak Ridge. So, um, that will probably be coming out soon, um, some type of advertisement that we're looking for people that have an interest in that. So if you guys think of somebody, please let them know that that's what we're going to be working on. And that is kind of, um, our long-term, um, possibility goal. It's, it's my goal, but, um, it wouldn't be something that's going to happen, you know, in the next two months. This would be a process and I do hope that Kevin will be involved in it and, um, yeah, that's all I have for that right now. Any questions on that? Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yeah, I think you said, uh, Counselor Bjarnson. Wasn't it, uh, Counselor Coker that was going to be on there with us?
Um, it was myself, um, leading for the Oak Ridge Committee and Counselor Bjarnson. And then it was kind of tied between yourself and Counselor Coker and Counselor Coker ended up kind of sitting back.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. So, um, I'll send an email out to you guys here shortly, just as a reminder of that date. And hopefully we can get together and start talking about getting citizens on that committee and also the feasibility portion of it.
Okay. Also, I wanted to let you know, uh, I, uh, may not be able to attend yet. I don't know. I'm going to have a surgery happen next Thursday. And so I don't know exactly how long I'm going to be out.
That's okay. I'll keep you updated on by email. Tune in when you can, when you're feeling up to it.
Thank you.
All right. Finance report. Did you have, or go ahead, Counselor Kenyon?
Sorry, I wanted to backtrack really quick. I wanted to, um, ask a question on the budget committee application. I looked everywhere. Someone asked me for the link on the city website and I could not find it. But I saw tonight in our packet, some of these applications look like they were filled out automatically online. So where is that on the city website? Could maybe you, Kevin, send? So we can forward it out to people?
Yeah, there's a couple of different locations on the website right now for forms. Uh, so I can, I could certainly share that with council if, if you want.
The, um, so to be specific, when I, I found two different spots online that say that they are a volunteer application form. Go to that app form. What I am seeing is not what I saw in my package.
Oh, okay. So two, two different forms are going on.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So I will try to take a look at that tomorrow or Monday to see if I can get, get reconciled.
Yes. That's all I have.
I'm writing myself a note. Just one moment. Okay. Uh, finance report, Colleen? Or is that just a placeholder there, Kevin?
Well, we had planned to get that finance report out to you obviously a lot earlier, but closing the books, we had to close the books and then produce the report. So Colleen did get that sent out. Um, it's just an FYI. If you have any questions about any of the numbers in there, if you, you can certainly ask them tonight or if you want to follow up with an email or text, I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions about the numbers that you're seeing.
Um, so my only question, I actually had this question before the discussion on the, um, work session on public safety fee, but I've been really curious why the transfer that was approved in the budget committee, um, from emergency services isn't made yet. What's the, and I'm, I'm not being accusatory. I'm just curious on what is the normal timeline to make that transfer? And, um, you know, I, I guess I would assume that it's something that's done as soon as the budget is in place. And I'm talking, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, if you could, if you could help sort of, um, you're mentioning the budget committee. So the budget committee that can mean to create our current fiscal year budget had approved a transfer. Um, but you're not seeing that reflected in the quarterly report.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Well, obviously that's, that's news to me. Um, I don't have that obviously institutional knowledge. So I need to work with Colleen and dig or dig a little and get back to you on that one.
Well, and I would assumed it would have been done back in July, but, um, it didn't look like it had been done to me. So were you having a question about that too, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I have some clarification information that'll probably help you with that or help Colleen with that.
Yes, please.
But also some other things. Um, well, in specifics to that, I actually researched it. I don't know, a few weeks ago, uh, about the transfer. And I know that, um, or I thought I remembered that in the past, that was something that was like, um, divided up throughout the year and portions were transferred either, either every month or every quarter. So since that was what my memory was, I looked up some old financials and, um, 20, the 1920 budget year, um, they were transferred regularly throughout the year. And then the 2021 budget year, it was held empty the entire year, that line, uh, on the, on the monthly financial report. And I asked, I think it was during budget season or right before it, um, why that hadn't been done yet. And he said, he was holding it till the end of the year. And I don't remember the specific reason for that, but, but I did notice when I was researching this, that other things like, um, oh, what are those fees that we charge different departments?
Administrative.
Administrative overhead are taken and transferred, you know, kind of monthly or maybe every other month so that it's kind of consistently being depleted throughout the year. So, um, my big question would be why that one thing isn't being done throughout the year, whereas other things are continually being transferred throughout the year and they used to be being done throughout the year. So that's something obviously Colleen's going to have to probably look into and get back to us on that. I'd like to see it too. I really think that it's
Yeah.
helpful for us when we're looking at our financials every month to see a real overall of where we're at.
Exactly. Yeah. And that's for me, it's not really so, it's not important to me, um, why it was being done a different way before. My hopes are that we can get back to what Counselor Kenyon's saying, that we either do it evenly on a quarterly basis. Monthly would be better, obviously, but that might be more workload for you. But whatever it is, it just seems like it would be, um, a little, it'd be a lot more accurate for an average citizen or, or even us to read the budget and get a better idea where we're at if that money is allocated, you know?
I also have a little bit more I wanted to touch on.
Go ahead.
Um, Kevin mentioned the quarterly financial report and I didn't get to open your email today, Colleen, so I apologize, but I just wanted to clarify, is it an actual quarter? Because I'm used to seeing a monthly report every month at the second council meeting. And I appreciate it. We got it early this month, but, um, what I'm used to seeing is the second meeting, a monthly, uh, financial.
Yeah. So I made the, I elected to share the quarterly because of, it provided more context for the, the work session that we had earlier tonight in terms of the numbers. Um, so I was just trying to be transparent about, um, that discussion. Uh, we certainly will plan on providing you a monthly report, um, uh, from just March. Uh, but you could probably glean that information from the quarterly report, but we didn't want to deviate from the monthlies. We'll, we'll certainly do that for your April 21st meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions on financial stuff? Thank you, Kevin and Colleen. All right. Number 17. Do we have, we don't have anything for ordinances, public hearings, correct? Awesome. Okay. Public comment. Colleen, do you still not have anyone there?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone on the Zoom call, if you wish to have public comment, just raise your hand. And if you don't know how to raise your hand, just go ahead and turn yourself off mute. All right. I don't see anyone. So we are going to go into executive session and we will not be coming back out into public. So those of you that are in the audience, there is no sense in hanging around. We will be going into two public or do we have just one or two executive sessions, Kevin?
Yeah, that's, that's up to the council. If you want to do a city recruitment update, but we definitely need to, uh, conduct the one for real estate transactions in order to give council an update on the OIP.
Okay. So executive session, ORS 192 dot 660, PRIN 2. Governing body, we are going to be conducting deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property and to consider employment of public officer, employee or staff member or individual agent. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, I just caught that you did mention PRIN 2, but not PRIN E and PRIN A, just to clarify for the record.
All right. Thank you. So the first thing that I All right, thank you. So the first thing that I mentioned to deliberate with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property and transactions was PRIN E and the employment